Welcome to our second session of our Planning and Zoning Board Training. Tonight, we're talking about running board meetings effectively, which is a very hot topic because sometimes you get people or things that like prolong and go on and on and on and before you know it, too much time has lapsed and you've not accomplished anything. So tonight, we have Jacqueline McCray with us. Excited to have her here. She is the Senior Manager of Management Partners. And just a little bit about her and about her firm. Management Partners is a local government consulting firm. So they service local governments across the United States. Jacqueline is a former urban planner and a former planning commission. And she is also a member of APA and brings with us a wealth of knowledge and experience that she's going to share with you all tonight. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome Jacqueline McCray.
Well, thank you. So welcome and thank you for being here on such a beautiful evening. But the topic is exciting. And as Yolanda said, I bring a little bit of a planning history with me. So I'm with Management Partners. We are a local government consulting firm. But prior to that, I worked in local government. And so, you know, my heart is really in local government. I was educated at the University of Cincinnati at the School of Planning in DAAP, the School of Design, Art, Architecture, and Planning. And I worked as an urban planner for the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission for about three years. And then I did a tour of City Hall, starting in the planning department, ending up as an assistant to the city manager, going to the budget office, and then going to work with a former city manager with Management Partners to do local government consulting. So while we do a lot more than urban planning, my heart is with the planning profession. I'm a member of the American Planning Association and I'm also a certified planner. So I love, I love planning and I, and I'm glad that all of you are here. I know that I have planning commissioners here, BZA members here, Architectural Review Board members here, any historic board members here?
We're from the Water Board.
Water Board, okay, welcome. Anybody else? Yes, you two.
Architectural Review Board.
Architectural Review Board and Historic Preservation. Okay, good. So all related to planning and land use. So in our session, goals are really to talk about effective meetings and your roles in the respective boards that you serve, how to engage the public when there are, you know, tough decisions to make, and really to help everyone in a collective conversation, you know, be more effective board members in whichever board that you serve on, okay? And so I want to really encourage, you know, a dialogue between both sides of the room here and, and myself. I want to encourage you to ask questions when they come up. There may be a little bit of overlap from your session from last week. Everyone here was at the session last week? Okay, about planning law? There's some people shaking their heads no. Okay, so we will, you know, so we'll cover the overlaps a little bit with regard to ex parte communication and conflicts of interest. So a little bit about you, and there's so many people in the room, if everybody took a minute, you know, we'd be here for a really long time doing introductions. So what I thought I would do is ask how many new board members are in the room, less than a year? Okay, that's good. And, and how many have been on a planning board for one to five years? How many more than five years? Oh, yeah. And who in here is a chair or a vice chair of your board? Oh, nice. Okay, good. Does anyone have any planning factoids or interesting planning or land use pieces of data that they would like to share with the group? A little known fact? Or commonly known fact? I'll start. So one that I have is that I was really proud to work with the City of Cincinnati's Planning Department because the first adopted land use plan in the United States was in the City of Cincinnati in 1925. Pretty cool, huh? Yeah. Any other little factoids about planning or land use that you want to share with your colleagues? No? Nothing? Yes?
For those that weren't here last week?
Yes.
We learned that in Houston, Texas, they have no ordinances whatsoever.
That's correct.
You can build whatever you want to wherever you want.
Right. That's, that's pretty different, isn't it? Yeah. No zoning. Hmm, okay, that's, that's a, yeah, that's a really different concept for me also. Okay, so we should probably get started then. The agenda is, you know, fairly simple. We're going to talk about roles and responsibilities, ethical conduct. We're going to spend a lot of time there. If you need a break, you know, halfway through, we'll take a break. And if not, we'll keep plowing ahead. And then we're going to talk about, you know, meeting structure and operating procedures, public participation and public hearings, and then tough decision making, you know, because from time to time, we know that boards and commissions, land use is such an important thing. It touches all of us. It's a primary, basic right to purchase land, to hold, to hold property rights. But you know, land use and planning regulates the use of, of property and land. And so from time to time, issues, we all know that issues come up that really get the public stirred up and there are points of view on both sides. And sometimes people aren't so happy when they show up at your meetings. Okay, so we'll talk about that and some ways to address tough issues and issues of conflict. Okay? So, you know, how many, when you joined, of the new members, the, the board members in the room, when you joined your, or the old ones, when you joined your respective board, did you have an orientation to your board?
I'm in it right now.
You're in it right now. Okay. All right. Well, welcome. Yeah, welcome. And hopefully you'll find some useful information that will help you, whether you're a new board member or an existing board member. I was on the Planning Commission in Cincinnati for nine years and we had lots of interesting, very interesting commission meetings. Some more well-attended than others, you know, pack-the-room kind of meetings, and then others where you could hear crickets if we weren't talking in the room. So that's kind of how it goes. So, so let's start from the beginning. The Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 713.02, spells out all of the duties and powers of the Planning Commission. It's fairly extensive. It's very weighty information. It talks about the role of the Planning Commission. In some, some states really designate how often you have to make plans, okay? How often you have to update the plans. Ohio's is, is general in that it doesn't specify how often the plan has to be updated. But it says that a planning commission has those powers and duties to make those plans. And we all know, you know, about the saying of making no small plans. But the Planning Commission can make plans and maps, okay? They can make, designate the uses of land. They can designate what happens in the right-of-way, okay? They can designate what happens to some extent through zoning, a great extent through zoning and subdivision regulations on private property. Okay? They can also designate historic properties and buildings through Historic Preservation Commissions. And then also that, you know, zoning and subdivisions, and that's kind of the heart of planning. That's where a lot of people really touch planning most often, is when they're using their property, learning if what they want to do is permitted at the address of the property that they want to conduct the activity, or if they want to subdivide land. Okay? And so Planning Commission has the power then to regulate that activity. And if, and if you, you know, you want to go to the Ohio Revised Code and snag it down and look at it, once again, it's Chapter 713.02, okay? You also, as planning commissioners, have the right to hear and determine appeals of the zoning code and to grant exceptions and verances, okay? And in most jurisdictions, you have separate boards to do that, okay? And so those powers then are delegated to those separate bodies and boards. So there are board members and there are board member, there may be board member committees, and then there's staff to the board. Does everyone in here on a board have a, have at least one designated staff person that you work with? Okay, all right. Does everyone in here on, on a board have committees of the board? Do you function in committees or do you primarily function as an entire board?
Just a board.
Just a board. Even the planning commissioners, no committees? No? Okay. All right. Some planning commissions, you know, designate committees, mostly ad hoc committees, to help them in their work. Sometimes it's a little easier, especially if you're in the process of making a new plan, an area plan or a comprehensive plan. Sometimes there will be a subcommittee designated to lead that effort and then report back to the body of the whole. And that, of course, will be in your bylaws. Do all of you, all of you probably have your bylaws with you tonight? No? Okay. But you have read through them and you understand them and you know your responsibilities as board members, maybe? If you haven't, that would be a good thing to do. Get those bylaws from whoever your staff person is. Ask, do we have bylaws? Specifically for planning commissioners, those really help you organize, you know, the work that you do and how you conduct your business. Okay? So all of you are doing the business of the public, right? In some way, in some fashion. And so the bylaws really help you do that. And so part of your responsibilities as a board member in whatever capacity you're in, you know, is to come prepared to your meetings. Do you generally get your packets, you know, at least a week in advance of your meetings? Yes? Some yes? Yeah? Okay. Are they, are they fairly large packets? Is a week enough time? Is it less than a week? Anybody get their packets less than a week?
Less than a week.
Less than a week?
Three days.
Three days? Okay. How's that work out for you? That's a lot of work to do in three days because, you know, you want to read all your materials in advance. You want to get acquainted with the issue. You might want to do a drive-by of the site. You might want to ask staff to take you on a tour of, of a property if it's a big development. You might want to ask questions of staff, right? In any event, you know, it's important that you are responsible board members and getting your packets in enough time to read it thoroughly is, yeah, what is helpful. Any other issues about being responsible board members and doing, doing your job responsibly? Those of you that have been on planning commissions or BZAs or the Architectural Review Boards for more than a couple of years, what are, how do you show up as, as a board member? What are some of the things you do to prepare? Yes?
We just went from getting packets of materials.
Right.
To getting it electronically now.
Does that help? You like that better?
Personally, no.
No?
It's a big transition and a big getting used to.
Okay. You like the paper?
Especially when you get a big plan and something like my printer can choke on it.
It chokes on it, right.
It's harder to look at it in a small screen.
It's really tiny, yeah.
One of our, one of our BZA members refuses to get electronically. He goes up, he goes up and demands the paper.
He gets a paper, okay. All right.
It might be just difficult. He might not have a computer, it might be difficult to do.
Right. You can make notes on the paper too. Right. And so some people might prefer it electron, yes, sir?
Another thing is more detailed print of what, I'm on a zoning board and a lot of times it's a little, on a napkin kind of, we're going to put a new roof or something, whatever it is.
It's so tiny.
And, and you know, like, okay, go ahead and do it, then you find out, oh, that ain't what we saw at all.
Right.
So a more detailed print of what they're up to.
So you might need something larger. Okay, these are issues that you might want to talk to your, your staff liaison about. Yes, you did.
One of the things I do is I either subscribe to or I get copies of all local papers.
Oh, good.
And then is it all related? Then I cut that out and become aware of it and bring it up to the board.
Great idea.
Meeting, so we're not surprised.
Okay, awesome. Anything else? You know, as board members, you know, there are multiple relationships that you're navigating. Okay, so as a board member, you are navigating your role on the board, right? With your other members of the board to make decisions. You're interacting with the public. Everybody's the public, basically, okay? Your neighbors are the public. You're interacting with staff. You may be interacting with other, with other boards. Okay, so the Planning Commission might ask the Architectural Review Board. You might have a joint meeting about something. Or the Planning Commission might have, you know, a meeting with the local transportation, county transportation planning board about something. You're certainly relating to elected officials, planning commissioners are, because your decisions go to elected officials, right? So there are lots of relationships in your job as, as a board member, some way, somehow. Yes?
One of the ones you're missing is we, like in our case, we have a contractor that, in our case, handles our water service. So we deal with contractor as well.
Ah, okay.
In the circle.
Okay.
Whatever the contractor or contractors are that would be providing support to your particular function.
Right. So good. That's another one to add, another circle, contractors. And how do you relate to that contractor? The contractor provides?
A report every meeting.
Report.
Detail report.
Okay.
We'll follow up on any questions that we would have.
Okay.
From the meeting.
Good. Any other relationships missing? Contractors is one we added. Yes?
Actually, on some of the issues that are brought before us, the, the board, they have their own private contractors attend the meeting with them.
Right.
And they're the ones that sometimes address the board.
Sure. Their engineer or their architect or, right. Okay? So there might be, the applicant might hire a professional to act in their behalf. Okay? Others? Any others?
Attorneys?
Land use attorneys in particular, right, will show up. They'll have clients that they'll want to advocate and present their cases for. Okay? Yes?
We also have maybe a small city limits and we have probably the same number of people that live not in the city but in the township around. And some issues, you know, they may want to speak their opinion too and it's, it's kind of hard to divide that or. Relate that to the issue.
Yeah. Because are they outside of your jurisdiction? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. But they're still are interested enough to come, and they have a position about the issue at hand. Can you say a little bit more? Can you give us an example?
Yeah, the, the school, we only have one school, which is the city and the township also.
Right.
And we've had a couple of school issues that, and let's see, all the facilities are within the city limits.
Okay.
And we'd probably get more, there are probably more children that live in the township than live in the city.
Got it.
And those people come in are pretty opinionated.
Sure. So there may be some overlapping jurisdictional boundaries. Yes? Did you have your hand up? Nope? Okay. All right. All right. So, yeah, so the question again is other things that, that you've done yourselves, those of you that have been on boards, to become, you know, more informed about how you do your work as a board member. You read the newspapers.
I've been stopped when I was looking at a property by a neighbor asking me what I was doing. And I told them and a discussion ensued about therapy, about what was going on.
Ah, okay. All right. So you'll go out and you'll take yourself on a tour? Okay? Other ways that you inform yourself are, are, how many in the room are members of the Ohio Planning Association? Which is the local chapter of the American Planning Association? No? Okay. Oh, good! Oh, great! Yeah. Okay. All right. So that's, that's, that's another way that you might want to keep yourself informed. Yes?
I just try to make it happen of reading the agendas of the other boards and pushing it out so I can.
Good idea.
Stay tuned for that.
Okay, great.
In the overall world, we don't pay attention.
That's right. Yep. That's a great idea. I like that. Yes?
I had to learn how to read some of those maps.
You have to read maps.
Tree maps and.
That's correct. Right. Topography, yes. And how did you do that?
As a fellow board member.
Good. Okay.
I thought we were.
Okay, great. Okay, so yeah, lots of, you're looking at lots of maps and so you need to learn how to read those things. Right. If you want to understand what the issues are. Good.
I also had to learn about trees and.
That's right.
Trees and.
Right.
What's good and what's not good.
That's great. Yes. Okay. So yeah, you're asking questions and you're kind of figuring out what you need to do to understand the materials you have in front of you. And you go find it and you get it. That's great. Okay, so now we're going to dig a little deeper into, because being, you know, one of the things I want to hit home on in terms of being a responsible board member are from the American Planning Association, ethical principles in planning. And there are 20 principles that they adopted and they are still the same ones that they adopted back in 1992. And they deal with the public interest and integrity and proficiency. And, and you have a handout about it. And it really, it really articulates very well the things that we as either planning, and I don't expect you to, to read from up there because you have it, you have the detail. That's just a summary of what these two pages are, three pages. But it really lays out in detail our responsibilities, my responsibility, your responsibilities, citizen planners' responsibilities in serving the public in whatever role, either professionally or as a board member, or as a certified planner, or as an elected official, okay? And I just want to kind of go through these in a detailed fashion. And we can talk about these a little bit and see if you have any, any questions. Recognize the rights of citizens to participate in planning decisions. Everybody has a right. Strive to give citizens, including those who lack formal organization, who lack a formal organization or influence, full, clear, and accurate information on planning issues and the opportunity to have a meaningful role in the development of plans and programs. Okay? Strive to extend choice and opportunity for all persons, okay? Recognizing a special responsibility to plan for the needs of disadvantaged groups and persons. Okay, these are our responsibilities. Assist in the clarification of community goals, objectives, and policies and plan-making. Ensure that reports, records, and any other non-confidential information, okay? So some of the, some of your deliberations may be confidential. And I know last week, you all talked about executive sessions, I think you did, okay? So that's, that's confidential information, okay? But ensure that reports, records, and any other non-confidential information is and will be available to decision-makers, makers, is made available to the public in a convenient format and sufficiently in advance of any decisions that you make. Okay?
Question?
Yes?
How is the, who makes a decision about confidentiality? In other words, I mean, is the city supplying with information, do they write confidential on there or, or you have to know that?
Well, so I take that to mean, and I, and I'm going to give this disclaimer, that I am not a legal professional. And so you always will consult with your city attorney or legal professional to your board, what's confidential. But specifically those things that you might do in an executive session, okay? Which are not open to the public. Okay, so those deliberations or anything, like you said, that are deemed to be confidential, however your legal professional to your board or commission defines that, okay? So if it's not confidential, then it has to be made available to the public.
And so it probably should be, if it's supplied, it should be somehow marked that way because otherwise we wouldn't know.
That's correct. You would have to know that it is confidential information. Yes?
Question somewhat related. I'm from Tip City as well. And related to the electronic distribution of packets, the city provided us a tip city dot net email address rather than using our own private email addresses. I think because of the confidentiality reason, is it, as a public official, would our personal email address possibly become, serve me to public record if there are overreach? And so is that why the city would you do that?
Well, and once again, this is, this is another issue that's in the, in the very detailed Sunshine Laws book from the Ohio Attorney General about what's public record and what isn't, okay? But even if you're using your private email or you have a city email address, if it's related to the business of the public, it's still public information. I think.
Hoover Heitz had that same problem and they, there was a big controversy in our council for those who know from Hoover Heitz. And it was determined it was, they were trying to do public business using personal emails and it was a foul.
I think the issue might become, like, other information that is just mine is private would also need to become public record if I ever had to.
That is correct. Yes.
I was potentially being sensitive on that, actually, giving us some email addresses so that our, our personal information could. so that our, our personal information could.
Does not become public.
And I would have anyone in the public.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing is too on that is individuals should not rely upon someone else making the decision. If you think that there is confidential information there, you need to flag it to like the attorney for your jurisdiction to point that out.
To make that determination.
From what I've seen, in our city's case, Hoover Heights, they've been slotting and they put out information that should not have gone out.
Ah, okay.
So you need to flag that to your.
So someone questioned it, you probably questioned it and said, I think this probably shouldn't be going out.
Well, I'll give you an example, you can, there's applications there, people, everyone probably filled out and asked for references, okay? Now you probably didn't tell your references, oh, this is, could be made public. So it would have maybe a contact information on there that people did not know was going to be public and yet if they put those applications out there on an agenda that is made public.
Sure.
Then the references never knew that their private information could go out there.
Yeah.
Whereas maybe the applicant probably knew maybe it could be, but certainly not the references. And so that's an example.
Yeah.
And so if you see stuff like that, you need to point it out.
Correct, yep. If you have a question, ask your legal professional to your board.
And when, and when you say the reports and records, and make sure they're available to, to the public, you're talking about just the planning board? You're not talking about the zoning appeal board or those kind of boards, right?
Well, this is any, this is for any board, okay, that operates in the public, okay? So it would be a zoning board of appeals. Those are still public records. So moving on, number six, try to protect the integrity of the natural environment and the heritage of the built environment. I think that's, that's an easy one, at least in writing anyway. Lots of conflicts around how you do that. Pay special attention to the interrelatedness of decisions and the long-range consequences of present actions.
That's important.
That's a key one, right? Terms of decision making?
Yeah.
Okay? The interrelatedness of decisions that you make over the course of time as planning commission members, as BZA members, as architectural review board members, you know, I know plenty of times when I was on planning commission, I would ask, you know, has this issue ever come up before and how did we deal with it? Okay? So that I had some context for history in terms of my decision making.
Who were you asking that to?
I asked that to staff. The staff to the planning commission.
What'd they say?
Well, and sometimes, sometimes, you know, depends on what, what the issue was and sometimes they would say, well, here's what, you know, the plan, how the planning commission voted the last time, you know, four years ago or 10 years ago. Yes?
Then were you compelled to follow that process?
As a planning commissioner, I factored it that into my decision making. Yes, I did.
But you didn't feel compelled?
I don't know if I felt compelled, I, I, it depends, you know, it's all, it's, it's case by case, you know? And you put that into what you've heard from the public and what your, the staff is telling you about the issue and their analysis. So I weighed it and, you know, I can't say if I, if I was or wasn't compelled, you know, but I certainly factored it into my decision making.
That comment, I mean, you should never feel like you're being compelled to follow precedent because things could change. Like the EPA could come out with a rule that says, okay, you got to do it this way. And so what our decision 10 years ago didn't take that into account, so you never say that you're always going to follow past precedent.
No, I didn't say that at all.
But I guess you have to mark.
Right.
So you have to use your best judgment to view the situation.
Correct, yeah. Okay, so then there's a section, a whole bunch of ethical principles about integrity and proficiency. Planning process participants should exercise fair, honest, and independent judgment. Exercise honest and independent judgment, I'm on number eight, in their roles as decision makers and advisors. Make public disclosure of all personal interests they may have regarding any decision to be made in the planning process in which they serve or are requested to serve as advisor or decision maker, okay? So that's that whole conflict of interest, we're going to talk about that a little bit more. Okay? The planning process participant should define personal interest broadly to include any actual or potential benefits or advantages that they, a spouse, a family member, or person living in their household might directly or indirectly obtain from a planning decision. Conflict of interest, again. Abstain completely from direct or indirect participation as an advisor or decision maker in any matter in which they have a personal interest. And leave any chamber in which such matter is under deliberation unless their personal interest has been made a matter of public record. Okay, so, so revealing that you have an interest in a planning issue that's being deliberated, okay, making that a matter of public record, making a formal statement, okay? That's important to do and to know. Okay? Because if you don't, then you're subject to someone saying you voted on something where you had a conflict of interest, okay? So that's a, that's a key one. Seek no gifts or favors nor under, nor any offer under any circumstances in which might reasonably be inferred that gifts or favors were intended or, or expected to influence a participant's objectivity as an advisor or decision maker in the planning process. So appearances, okay, in our interactions, okay, with our neighbors and our friends and the public, developers, contractors, other individuals involved in the planning process, how we interact is important once you become a member of one of these bodies, okay? Because you're making decisions on people's property rights. Planning process participants should not participate as an advisor or decision maker in any plan or project in which they have previously participated as an advocate. Now this one, you know, I had to, I said to myself, well, you know, I might have to ask my legal professional what this really means, okay? Because if I'm a decision maker, okay, or, or an advisor to someone, you know, because these, these principles I'm reading relate to, you know, planners, practicing planners, elected officials, anyone else that might participate in a planning process, so like a consultant, okay? And so if I've participated as a advisor or a decision maker, then I can't participate as an advocate and then vice versa. So that one, that one gives me a little heartburn, but those are the, that's an ethical principle that APA says that, that we should adhere to. But I would certainly talk to my legal professional on my board if you have a concern like that. Okay? So then number 14 says that planning process participants should, should serve as advocates only when the client's objectives are legal and consistent with the public interest, that makes sense. Not participate as an advocate on any aspect of a plan or program on which they have previously served as an advisor or a decision maker, that makes sense. Not use confidential information acquired in the course of their duties to further a personal interest, okay? That makes sense. Should not disclose confidential information acquired in the course of your duties, okay? Except when required by law. 18, not misrepresent facts or distort information for the purpose of achieving a desired outcome. So don't twist the facts, okay, to get a certain decision. Not participate in any matter unless adequately prepared and sufficiently capacitated to render thorough and diligent service. And lastly, respect the rights of all persons and not improperly discriminate against or harass others based on characteristics which are protected under civil rights laws and regulations. So this is like, this is a lot, it's, but it's kind of, it's your guidebook to your behavior, okay, as a responsible board member, be it planning commissioners, EBA, okay, architectural review board, or other land use related board. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about operating procedures, the Ohio Sunshine Laws, your bylaws, parliamentary procedure, and there will be some overlap based on what you heard last week. And then lastly, you know, your agendas. So Ohio Sunshine Laws really govern and spell out what you can do in the public, okay? How to structure your meetings, how to notice your meetings, what a meeting, how a meeting needs to be advertised to be a public meeting, okay? Because you all operate in the public. And so the state really kind of sets the bar, okay, about how you behave. The state has training, there are different trainings all around the state from the Attorney General's office about what's in the Sunshine Laws. You can download them from the website, it's about 102 pages. It's interesting reading, covers everything that you might want to know about meetings in the public and it will make you well-informed and, and your board well-informed. It covers, you know, public records, how the public operates and what it means to be an open public meeting, how you notice that meeting, what your minutes should include, and any other special circumstances. And so it really tells you how to be an official body. And so that's where you want to start, you want to start with the state law and what the Sunshine Laws really govern. And as I've said time and time again, you know, your attorney to your board is really responsible for making sure that you're operating within those Sunshine Laws, okay? So that's, that's their role. But if you want to know all the particulars about it, it's right there. You can download it to this evening after you get home and start reading it, okay? So, and, and there's the website, it, and I do want to make a modification, after ohioattorneygeneral.gov, you can scratch out that backslash yellow book. And when you get to Dave Yost's website, you just search the Sunshine Law Manual and it'll pop right up and all the training sessions will be right there and you can download it and then, you know, have at it. So the next level, you know, if you're operating procedures, so you start at the state level, what the state requires you to do, you know, to be a public body. And so, and then internally, what you do to be a public body, you know, your own bylaws, your own govern, rules for governing yourselves, you know? What is your purpose and your powers? What are your membership terms and, and your vacancies? You know, do you have committees? When do you have your meetings? Okay, we've talked about ethics already. You might have some, some local ethics or you might have some board-specific ethics that you follow. There may be other sections to those operating procedures, you know, but like any, any group, operating procedures do just that, they govern how you operate in the public and, and they let the public know what they can expect, okay? And you as, as particularly as new board members should ask the staff to your board, do we have bylaws and if so, can I get a copy and read them so that you know what parameters you're operating in as a member? The other piece of, of operating procedures are that, is that complicated thing called Roberts Rules of Order parliamentary procedure. And I'm sure that all of you planning commissioners are operating using Roberts Rules. Lots of different ways to address issues, to discuss issues, and to get a majority vote and that's all spelled out, of course, in Roberts Rules. Lots of different guides and ways to do that. Your legal professional, and I know last week you all talked a lot about Roberts Rules, will help you, will help, your legal professional will help keep you within Roberts Rules so that if there's a challenge to how you made your decision, it's defensible, okay? That's one way it's defensible if you've used Roberts Rules. Certainly not the only way that it would be defensible in a court of law. Okay? But it's a way to help you make decisions, help you talk among yourselves and have conversations with the public and, and each other, okay? If you go on amazon.com, I bet you there are, I don't know, as many people as are in the room, there are many different Roberts Rules of Orders books, Roberts Rules for Dummies, you know, The Quick Start Guide, all different little primers to help you in how you make motions and amendments and make decisions. Okay? So get familiar with these things, you know, and keep them handy. You can do it electronically or not. Get the paper, do it like we used to do, the old-fashioned way. But that's another operating procedure, okay? So you have the Sunshine Law which says, you know, you have to have open public meetings, you have to get, have to give sufficient notice for your meetings, okay? And that you can't, you can't keep anyone out of your meetings unless you're in an executive session, that's a closed meeting and that, and you can do that. Okay? And then within that you have your bylaws and how you make decisions using some sort of rules, probably Roberts Rules. Okay, so, so then your agenda, you know, who sets the agenda for your boards? Staff primarily is setting your agendas, okay?
And the meeting report.
And the prior meeting, okay? Staff in the prior meeting guides your agenda development, okay? Is everyone using a, using consent items, a consent agenda format where you have, where everything is not a public hearing? Are most of you using a public hearing format for your meetings?
What does that mean?
The consent agenda, there are items that you don't take public comment on, that they're fairly standard, they're easy, you can take them off of that consent portion of the agenda if there are people in the audience that want to make a comment on it. But it's a, it's, it's those items that are routine or procedural or you know, everybody's in agreement with primarily. It's a part of your agenda that you know is not going to be subject to public comment. Routine reports, correct. So you're not using a consent item on your agendas. Everything has, is open to public comment, okay? All right? Because you're BZA, right?
Yep.
Right, okay. Yeah, well, I would think not in BZA because everybody comes there and they want you to, they want you, they want to make an appeal to you, right? Okay. So BZAs probably aren't going to have consent agendas. Other planning commissioners using consent agendas?
I guess we're a little confused by that. We're discussing like, there's usually no, not no discussion when we go over the minutes.
Uh-huh.
Though we do ask for discussion, does it mean, a consent item mean there's no vote?
A consent, no, there will be votes on consent items.
Okay.
Right. There will be a vote.
But because we don't have specific discussions, say, like approval of the minutes, we don't ask the, the public if they have any comments in the approval of the minutes, does that make it a consent item or, but we have a comment period at the end where they can comment on anything that happened to me, or, sorry, usually before.
Well.
We don't have a comment before we vote on that. We don't have a comment before we vote on that, so would that make it-
So consent, a consent item on your agenda will be a block where, where you, typically there might be, there could be one item, there could be, I don't know, any number of items. And, and there will not be any public comment, and you can take that whole item as a block and approve it, because you know that there's nothing controversial, there won't be any questions, okay, about it? Items one through four, can I hear a motion to approve? It's on the, or does anyone have, is there an item on the consent agenda that you want to take off, okay, so that we can discuss it? So it just means there's no discussion about it. Okay? And some, and some boards use that because they have so many items on the agenda, okay, that if they, if everything was, you know, discussed, if they had comments about everything, then the meeting would go on for two, three, four hours, and you know that no one's going to be, come out, and it's an easy item, and so you put it on the consent agenda. And then for public hearing items, does everyone have a specified time that the public can speak? Two minutes, three minutes? Okay? Green, yellow, red light? Sometimes, you know, boards will say, because it helps with the flow of the meeting and the predictability of the amount of time that people will be there, that, you know, everybody has three minutes or five minutes. And if 10 people show up for the same item, you know, the chair might say, I know that there are 10 people here for item number seven, can you please pick one or two spokespersons, okay? So that everybody's not repeating the same, the same information over and over again to you. What happens is, you might get complaints, okay? But, but it's, it's the right of the chair to say, you know, we have 20 people here for the same item, and so, you know, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt, you know, if we condense our time here, okay? And if you're going to say the same thing, if you all have the same issue and you came together, pick one or two spokespersons. Usually people will, usually, they might complain, but they usually end up saying, okay, that's reasonable, that's fair.
But how does the chairman know that beforehand?
Well, sometimes staff will let them know. There are going to be 20 people here, you know? Usually staff will know when there's a big item, because they've gotten phone calls or emails, leading all the way up to the meeting. Are there other ways that you use to control public comment?
We have known ahead of time that they were all going to say the same thing, but we will say, two minutes per person, and please don't repeat.
And please don't repeat, okay?
And that usually-
That helps?
Usually works.
Right? Okay. Do people use the time clocks or countdown clocks?
Yeah.
You just use your cellphone? Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other, yes?
We have a meeting guidelines page that gets-
Oh, that's good. Okay. And what are some of your guidelines?
Behavior things, you know, don't be disruptive, you have to be right about, and don't avoid, introduce your name and address.
Nice. Okay, that's good.
It's two minutes to speak.
Okay. And what happens when the person is on their, coming up on two minutes and 30 seconds?
The timer goes off at two minutes.
Okay, good, all right. That helps discourage discussion.
In the middle of the sentence, we continue to finish that within the-
Okay. All right.
And you can't let somebody go two minutes and 30 seconds, and then the next person makes two minutes.
They want, they want two minutes and 30 seconds too, right? Okay. So, you know, and one thing I just want to keep driving home, you know, about honoring the public trust in, in your public meetings, is that, you know, public hearings and committees and public comments are public, okay? And so you are operating in the public realm, okay? And so people are always watching, whether the cameras are on, you know, or not. People are watching you in public, okay? They're watching you at the grocery store, they're watching you at, you know, the gym. They may come up to you, as this gentleman said, and say, hey, can I have a word with you about an issue or my issue? And, you know, that's, that's, that's where you start getting into, you know, a little bit about that ex parte communication, okay? And you have to really make a distinction there about, you know, your role and the decisions you make, and what people want to say to you about those issues, okay? And so, you know, you just, you have to get some, and it's hard in the beginning. It may be hard, it was hard for me, to say, I'm sorry, I can't talk about that right now, but I encourage you to come to the planning commission meeting, or send all of myself and my planning commission colleagues your thoughts about that, you know, in an email, using our work email, our city-designated email accounts, so that we can hear what you have to say about this. But I can't, you know, entertain you one-on-one, okay? And it's really difficult, but, because someone else might see you, you know, a neighbor see you talking to whoever it is, the applicant or the applicant's attorney, you guys might go to church together, or you might, you know, who knows? Be associates in another realm of life, and so people are always, we know that we're in a world where you can't escape any public exposure. We're all socially networked somehow, some way, whether we want to be or not. So please just be aware that even when you think no, no one is watching, someone may be watching or listening. They might have this thing on record. You just, you just have to protect yourself. And so always just revert back to your ethical principles, you know? And it's a lot to remember. But, you know, things get posted now on social media, you know? And so you don't want to become fodder for social media. You don't want your board decisions to become fodder for social media. So, so just be very careful about that. But follow prescribed order, and it sounds like most of you do have a prescribed order for taking public comment, okay? So I, so we talked a little bit about conflicts of interest when we talked about the ethical decisions, the ethical principles. And, but that ex parte communication, and I know you hit on that a lot last week, but it bears, both of these bear a little bit of repeating. So, you know, if you have direct or indirect influence or financial participation, or you have a family member that has direct or indirect influence or financial participation, you need to make that known on record, okay? Because otherwise, there's a perception then that you and your colleagues aren't making fair decisions. You aren't treating everybody the same. Or that you're getting something out of a decision. Sometimes you have to abstain from voting, okay? And I can't tell you when, because I'm not a land use lawyer, but your legal professional to your board will certainly tell you. If you have a question, as this guy says down here in the table, ask it. If you don't feel right about an issue that you're hearing or deciding on, ask your legal professional. Do I need to abstain? Do I need to make this a matter of record? Okay? And, you know, ex parte means a one-sided conversation, and you really want to refrain from one-sided conversations, okay? So don't let someone put you in an awkward situation to say, I don't think I can talk about that right now, but I really invite you to email all of us on the board about your position, or come to the board yourself, okay? If you don't know, if you can, to say you're not sure if you can, email everybody, make it, and make it public. Or if you get, receive an email from someone about an issue, email it to everyone on the board, so that everybody has the same information to your colleagues. I received this, I want you to know that I heard from, you know, whatever committee or special concern group, and I want to share what I received with you.
We always tell people to send it to the clerk of council, because other times when that's happened, then if you have one member that responds back to the file-
Yeah.
Then all of a sudden, you've got this public hearing or public meeting happening.
Good advice. Uh huh. Send it to clerk, to the clerk of council, yeah. Good advice, yes.
What about communicating with the commission itself, the board?
Uh huh.
With a, if I had a question about something, and I think someone of my board buddies is maybe more expert on this than I.
Mm-hmm.
Is it permissible for me to query another board member outside of the board meeting?
I believe it is, but I would check with my, my attorney to the board. Sometimes you get into, you know, and I know everyone has heard about, you know, the issue in Cincinnati with the five city council members all texting each other. Well, that constituted a meeting, but it wasn't public record, okay? So you don't want to, you don't want to go there. So just check with your attorney about that, if you can do that or not.
If I have a question like that, I always ask staff, because I figure that's, that's their job.
It is their job, yep. Yep.
And we advise not to talk to each other outside of meetings, but call the city if they have questions.
Oh, okay. All right. That's what you've been advised to do, so good, okay. Her commission has been advised to check with staff if they have questions with, about anything. Don't talk among each other, okay, outside of meetings.
Yep.
So just be clear about what you can and can't do legally. Always err on the side. Don't be afraid to ask too many questions of that legal professional to the board. Staff might not always know either, because they're not, they're not attorneys. So I would just bug the, bug, bug your, your legal professional about that, until you're comfortable with how you can operate. So, so we just talked about this, the best practices for decision-making, you know, obtain, obtain information, know what you can and can't do, what's defined by your municipality, okay? Disclose conflicts prior to beginning discussion, recuse yourself when you are advised to do so, okay? Refrain from that ex parte, that one-sided information, okay? And, you know, the, the more you discourage inappropriate requests, okay, from outside, from people outside of your board, or from your friends and colleagues, the less they'll do it. So just be consistent in your behavior. If you're consistent, then you, you probably won't trip up and make a mistake, okay? So, so thinking through, you know, a tough decision. So from time to time, we get those land use decisions that are really tough, and we hear passionate pleas on both sides of the issue, okay? And you're torn between what's the right thing to do, you've asked what's happened in the past, you've considered, you know, the current, the current state of whatever the board is, or, or the current state of regulations, but you still have a tough decision to make, okay? Questions, just some questions, that I would kind of, sometimes I would just write them down on my little folder, you know, with all my planning commission items. I just have them on the inside of that folder, okay? Is the proposed action consistent with the board's mission? With our mission, with our plan, our comp plan, okay? With the goals for the particular neighborhood? Is it consistent? What are we trying to do here? Are there past practices that relate to the issue? Is there precedent for the issue? And how do those weigh in in current day to the issue that you have to, the decision you have to make? Will it really matter five years from now? Will this decision, is it a little tiny decision? Or does it have big implications, okay? Will it matter, okay? If the decision is made and it turns out to be wrong, how hard is it to reverse it? Because sometimes boards don't make the right decisions, you know? It's just a fact of life. So you have to ask yourself that. Can I live with my, with my vote, with how I recommend the issue? Can I live with it? If you're hesitating, why are you hesitating? Why is it this decision so tough for you? There might be other ways that you work yourself through those tough issues when you have a really tough planning decision. Sometimes decisions get overruled, or sometimes recommendations are not carried forward, you know? So the planning commission might vote one way, and council might go in the opposite direction, based on what they hear from their constituents. But yeah, there's always going to be those times when you have really tough land use decisions to make. So just, you know, kind of work yourself through it. Make sure you have enough time to make a good decision. Time is, is key. So I want to do just a little small group exercise. We've got a lot of people here. We have three scenarios. So if we, if we count it off in threes, with the ones taking scenario A, and the twos taking B, and this, and if you're a three, you take C. You've got 15 minutes. So Group A is ready to report out, and tell us your name and where you're from.
My name's Denise Moore, I'm from Sugar Creek Township. Our question was while, wha-
It's up there too, if you want to read it bigger.
While you are at a grocery store, neighbor comes up and asks you what was discussed at a closed meeting. Our, our group decided that the key issues to consider were the sunshine laws that would prevent us from discussing, and the mere fact that it says it's a closed meeting implies that it's not open to the public and we're not allowed to discuss it. What would we do to respond to that? We would be very polite-
Yes.
And we would explain the situation as best we could, explaining about sunshine laws and our obligation to be within the law. And then if they persisted, we would refer the person to the staff to, for further discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Group A? No. Okay, now who's my spokesperson for Group B?
Over here.
Oh, okay, there you are. I have to put this in front of you.
Yep, I'm putting it on.
Okay? Okay, go.
All right, so ours was, as you can read, basically, they came up with a 20-minute video. Our decision was, we're not watching the video that night. If the, if it could be tabled, we will table it. If it's something that can be put off, that way they can submit it. The reason we won't watch it that night, and, you know, we mentioned, even if it's like a five-minute video, we have no idea what's on it. We have no idea it's relevant. It could be a porn video. We're out live on Channel 6 on NBC. You know, so we're not going to let them. We could, we could say, you know, if we can't table it, we would say, you know, summarize your points. We personally, I'm in Kettering, we don't have a time limit, so we leave it up to the chair to control time. And usually what we do is have staff ahead of time say, all right, here's the four decisions the planning commission has to make. Because people tend to think, planning commission, you're going to vote for stuff you like and not vote for stuff you don't like. No, it's not what we do. We have four findings we've got to look at, and we have to make those four decisions. So you can talk as long as you want, as long as it's new information, it's relative to those four points. And then we let them vent a little bit if they have, you know, just because that's what you do. But then we try to bring them back in. So if they vent to us, they won't vent as much to city council maybe, so we save them a little. So we try to bring them back into focus, and so we would definitely not watch the video. We'd let them summarize it, we'd table if we could. It's pretty much where we ended up.
Great, okay. Thank you. Any questions? I think it's very nice of you to let people in Kettering talk- I think it's very nice of you to let people in Kettering talk as long as they like.
Sure. Well, until the chair cuts them off.
Till the chair cuts them off, okay. All right. Okay.
How you doing?
Oh, you're the chair. Oh, okay. Oh, good. Okay. And you're, you're Group C?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to sit that right there.
I'm Emily Hill, on the Water and Sewer Advisory Board in Eber Heights, and on Group C, we had a special interest group invited all the board members to look at a proposed site and an adjacent vacant building. So how would we actually respond? We would just, first of all, don't reply all to the email. So we would probably forward this to the staff if they were not added onto the list, and have them actually take care of this, because this is something that we wouldn't even go through. The vacant site itself may have some safety concerns, we don't know anything about that site. We would also be potentially trespassing if we went, and this is also not like a public event, and we don't know who the special interest group is. Is that neighbors? We don't know who that is. So that's all we came up with. Yes?
Did you say, "Don't use the, the city emails"?
We wouldn't reply to all. And if, if the staff was not on that email, then we would, just individually, just forward it to that one staff member, don't reply all.
Any other questions? Good. So I hope that that scenario was useful to you all, a little bit in just kind of thinking through what you might encounter in your tenure as a land use planning board, BZA member, architectural review board member, in your life as a member. So, yeah, test things, test the water, ask questions, lean on your staff really heavily, lean on your legal counsel really heavily. So thanks for going through that. I have for you a few resources. There's a really good planning commissioner's guide that was written by a couple of my colleagues from the School of Planning, and it's actually, I don't know, in its second or third edition, and it's, it's a really good read. Ohio Planning and Zoning Law, okay, is there. Also, the Ohio Revised Code that we started out with, the Ohio Sunshine Laws. There's a quasi-judicial handbook for boards making regulation decisions that's fairly new. Of course, the Roberts Rules books, and there are lots of others, and I encourage you to become involved with the American Planning Association. They have a special affinity group for planning commissioners, and it's always kind of cool to go to the local chapter of the APA conferences, because you always get lots of good information, and there typically is a session or two related to planning commission activities, okay? So, and there may be others. So just kind of seek out resources, stay involved, ask questions, lean on staff, that's what they're there for, is to help you do your work. And concluding thoughts? And I'm going to turn the concluding thoughts over to you. What concluding thoughts do you have after attending either this is, this being your first session or your second session? What thoughts do you have about your role as a land use or planning board member?
I think we're doing things right, aren't we?
Good. It's good to know, that's a comforting thought, isn't it? Yeah, good. Any other concluding thoughts?
Well, the, I think in our case, I don't know that our city of Eber Heights has come to terms with how to handle social media in this, for board actions. I think it came up a, a few years ago for our board in terms of how you handle Facebook postings, there was a big controversy with whether council members on Facebook or things like that. Some of the stuff dribbled over to our board. So I don't know that there's a meaningful policy out there for how to handle Facebook. The example here that we went through with someone in a grocery store, now it becomes a little bit different when you're on Facebook and that sort of thing.
Right.
So I don't think there's great guidance out there how to quite handle social media.
Okay, all right. I will look for some guidance, and if I find something, I will send it to you, Londa, to distribute to you, because she has your email addresses, okay? Other concluding thoughts?
You know, one thing on his thing, if you start doing that with it, looking at individuals, you could be getting set up by one side or the other. You know, if you spend a bunch of time talking to the one, and it could come back.
Yeah, that's why you don't want to do that. You don't want to put yourself in that position. Yes?
Someone's saying, "Social media is easier because you can just not-"
And ignore it.
Yeah, you just don't have to engage, but it's not standing in front of you.
Yeah.
It, it can be frustrating when there's an issue before the board, and what's on social media can be a bit of a firestorm filled with misinformation, and they're thinking that we're making a completely different decision than we're making. But I think your advice is right, you just, okay, if you got a problem, don't, don't engage.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Or, or maybe you ask your staff, you know, if there is a, a city webpage or a city Facebook page, to, you know, put out a little brief posting on the, with the correct information, so that everybody knows.
Right, they do that.
Good.
They put the, the packet essentially in the meeting notice-
Sure.
-various places, but that's the extent.
Yeah.
Go on, you're right.
Yeah. Other concluding thoughts? So I, you know, I thank you for your time, the time that you dedicate to land use and planning. I think it's so important. For me, it's really fun, I'm sure it's for you, it's fun, or else you wouldn't do it. You know, the decisions you make will last a long time, probably, probably, unless they're overturned, probably. And so, you know, just have fun doing what you're doing, remember your responsibilities, and thank you for being here this evening. Applause to you.